We can try and get an understanding. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you for giving us more time, Rep. Walker. We actually are coming to you from our Norwalk office that we had a very early morning.
Oh, oh, gosh. God bless you, one and all. Well, thank you. That that shows that that everybody's ready to roll up their sleeves and and try and make things happen as much as as quickly and as efficiently as possible. I see my, let's see, my, my, my colleague from Human Services, who is the the Chair of the Committee is here, and you you assured me because I I worried that we might have a lot of legislators that had sort of lost a lot of sleep last night watching March Madness. So I worried about that. So I rushed up to Hartford to make sure that that I get here for nine o'clock. But Jillian, you come through. Thank you very much. Oh, there's Matt, your your co-chairs signing on. So I'm really excited now. So I can shut up and sit back and let you guys take over. Great.
Great.
Matt, go right ahead.
So glad to have you back, Commissioner. I was thinking we could just dive back in to where we left off. Maybe we can share the screen?
Sure can. So Vinnie Russo is going to be the driver of our slides.
How's that working?
Again, that sounds great. That looks great. Does everybody see?
And Vinnie, good to see you and and very sorry for your loss.
Thank you very much, Representative. I appreciate that.
And I've greeted Rep. Walker this morning. Also greetings to the ranking member, Rep. Nuccio, and then, of course, the Subcommittee Co-Chairs of Rep. Gilchrist and Senator Lesser. So good morning, as DCF continues with the Working Group Questions. We begin on question 12. Is that where you have us leaving off, Rep. Gilchrist?
I'd love to say I remember, but I don't. It sounds good to me.
That's what I have.
All right, let's dive right back in.
And so that
Where did we leave off? And everybody goes, what? I don't remember. Thank you, Commissioner.
We have a big old bookmark. And so this question was a pretty lengthy request, but I think it was, I think the spirit of it was to kind of get into the the specific staff functions. And so we grouped them and offered an attachment that the committee has. It would be the attachment to question 12. It's labeled that way. And our CFO did a nice job of kind of chunking that out because I think there was just some question about the different functions that are performed by staff at DCF, if I remember the chain of questioning correctly when we were in our original presentation session. Because it is pretty lengthy, Rep. Gilchrist, how would you want us to respond to that? Or is the written submission sufficient?
Who, I'm going to ask my members, who who asked for this information? Does anyone recall?
Tammy, was this yours?
I'm not sure. Breakout of the state employee functions. I don't think so. I think this was one that was asked during our our presentation meeting, like when they came to present. I think this was one of the questions that was asked then. But I don't recall who specifically asked it, but I'm interested in seeing it. So, you know, carry on.
Maybe you could, could you pull it up just to show us and then?
Is it not on the screen?
Yeah, no, it's just the question that's on the screen. Pull up the attachment.
I have the attachment open on my screen.
And then, as Vinnie's pulling it up, our CFO, Melanie Sparks, who is on, Mel, can you just outline how it's broken down so the committee can look at it, not the content of it, but just how it's laid out?
There it is.
Morning, everybody. Melanie Sparks, DCF CFO. So it should be on your screen now. If you look at the first section on the left, we broke it out by DCF divisions, DCF units. And underneath each grade box with the unit's name would be the job classes that are that work in that unit, the next column being the number of positions under each job class, and the very last column to the center and the right of the document is a summary of what that unit does, the functions of that unit.
And the attachment is how many pages?
I believe it's five, six, nine. It would be nine, Representative.
As you said five, I'm going five, six. Okay, it's nine. All right.
Okay, thank you. I think people can look at this on their own and then follow up if they have questions. But thank you. This is a very helpful document.
The next question is, as he toggles back.
Jumping back and forth. There we go.
All right. The next question was related to providing the current current services eliminated and policy revisions for single cost accounting and room and board rate increases to private residential treatment facilities. These rate increases have been suspended every biennial budget since fiscal year 2004. So Melanie, do you want to explain that a little bit? Because this is your
So, single cost accounting is used for only one of DCF service types. It's used for our residential treatment centers. So that is a congregate program. All of our other congregate programs are traditionally budget-based, contained in purchase of service agreements, budgets submitted annually. Residential treatment facilities are fee-for-service. So we do look at their annual costs and we devise a rate for the following year, and that rate is paid to them for every day that a child is placed at the RTC. And we do subject our, the nuance here, I think, is that we do give our RTCs COLAs commensurate with our other providers. So in FY '22 and FY '23, when they were given it, when our private providers were allocated a COLA by the legislature, it was 4% in FY '22 and 5.41% in FY '23, our residential treatment centers received those as well.
Pay out all the other 2% COLAs have, have you paid out everything to all of your nonprofits that was supposed to have gotten the 2% increase?
The 2%, 2%?
No, don't, don't get, I'm sorry, don't get
Yes.
Have you paid out all the COLAs? Because I
Yes, ma'am.
It's Monday morning and I didn't, I stayed up and watched every little basketball. So I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. All of our COLAs have been paid out.
I got a question from a couple of nonprofits that they didn't get it. So what do I do?
If you could forward which which providers those were, I can check into those. But we have paid out all of the, all of the COLA money has been paid out.
Thank you, ma'am.
There, there is one nuance here that I just want to make sure we're not getting in that. Melanie, can you talk about the distinction of the private residential treatment facilities not to be confused with psychiatric residential treatment facilities or otherwise referred to as PRTFs? This is the the different account. Can you just make sure that everyone's clear on that? Because I wasn't. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So private residential treatment facilities, we actually call those our residential treatment centers. They are not psychiatric residential treatment facilities. That is not our soul nets. That is not the private PRTFs that are Medicaid-funded. These are, these, they're not group homes, but they are congregate living facilities similar to our other congregate programs. The difference is that they actually have onsite education.
Okay, so you're explaining that to me because?
Because when I first saw this, I thought myself this is referring to our PRTFs. And it's not because the acronym was used in the original question. So we spelled it out here, and I just wanted to make sure that no one else thought the same thing.
Okay, I, I, I thought, because I thought we were still on the COLAs. And that's why I thought you were saying that they didn't get any COLAs.
Oh, no, 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 just the the similarity in the name. I just wanted to make sure we were clear that these are residential treatment centers.
I just, I just wanted to make sure I, so all COLAs that we asked for last year have been paid out to all the nonprofits?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Melanie, did you answer in your response the sub-question here related to special ed and no Nexus?
Yes. So the SCAST rates do provide for an additional 66.9,000 in FY '24 and 135.5,000 in FY '25. And that is directly related to our no Nexus, our no Nexus kids.
So when you adjust your budget in the, in this line item, you, did you defer the kids that would be referred to this line item to another line item?
No, no. So the it, no Nexus is its own line item. So the education piece of these, of the kids living at these RTCs, it would be under no Nexus on, under that account. And then the rest of the Board and Care comes out of our Board and Care account. So the first part of the question speaks to impact to the Board and Care account, while the second, the sub-part speaks to the no Nexus.
Okay, so going back to the first part, which refers to our Board and Care account. The people that would have been referred to the, that, that category, the private residential treatment facilities, because of the reduction, did you then choose to refer them to another line as opposed to just not taking them in or refusing them at all?
No, ma'am. We've, we've taken in everybody that was needed to be served by an RTC, has been served by an RTC. We didn't defer.
Well, well stated. If you, did you change the category or the qualification to get them into that? So that, that they would not qualify for this, but they would qualify somewhere else. Did you do that?
Not to my knowledge, but I would defer to Deputy Commissioner Williams.
Hi. Good morning, Representative Walker. And for those on the line, I'm Michael Williams, Deputy Commissioner of Operations. And the answer to the question is no. What changed was the children's needs, children psychiatric needs shifted from needing that level of intensive inpatient kind of residential treatment to being able to be served with intensive in-home services with wraparound supports. And we saw that trend happen, not just recently, but it's been ongoing for the past 10 years. Where, you know, the new technologies and treatments and evidence-based programs have shown children to be receiving much more effective treatment in home with those programs there.
Okay, I, 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 I hear you. But I also know I've seen a lot of these kids, and a lot of some of these kids need even more intensive. So what happens to someone who would normally be referred to a PRTF? Are they, I know, I know you said that, that your, your utilization is down, but there's still, so there's still PRTFs out there in your budget. It's just not, not the, the volume before.
That is correct. The volume has decreased. We, if a child presents still in need of that level of care, they get that, they get that level of care. We have the capacity to meet every child's need for that level of care in our inventory right now.
Okay, thank you. I bet that, if I, I apologize if I didn't get to the right point. Thank you.
I, I appreciate the ability to to answer that, that question to Rep. Walker. So thank you for allowing us to elaborate a little bit more because even though we've recognized the trend of, you know, having children remain safely in families or in community with their therapeutic foster care, for instance, or services that wrap around in community, we still have residential treatment as part of the service continuum of our, of our congregate care.
When you, would you do, if you could, look at the kids that you are using and just tell me your percentage of dual di, dual custody, what do you call, dual custody because of of their behavior and stuff, and just let us know. I don't, I don't
Oh, certainly. Yeah, yeah. Is that sufficient? Okay.
Yep.
The next question is specific to our youth services bureaus, and the question was Connecticut Youth Services Association is requesting additional support of $60,000, $60,000 per Youth Services Bureau per fiscal year or for a total of 6.18 million for all 103 Youth Service bureaus in both years of the biennium. Funding will increase staffing to support mental health, case management, and program services based on the needs of each community. The DCF concur with the need for this additional funding in FY '24 and '25 for YSBs, why or why not? So the written response that we provided basically says that the governor's budget supports the services currently provided, and additional expectations would require additional funding allocations. But I'd like to expand a little bit about that response and how I think we can continue the conversation related to the expectations of Youth Services Bureau. So beginning under fiscal year 2020, the state enacted budget, DCF was operated as a pass-through of state appropriated funding for the Youth Services bureaus. So these programs, especially YSBs, are primarily funded by municipalities and receive separate private and federal funding along with state appropriations. DCF provides appropriate fiduciary oversight to the programs, budget plans and narratives, and the expenditures of the funds and other grant administrative duties. But DCF does not review the program's overall financial infrastructure and or perform evaluations as it's not currently part of our state statutory mandate. So what I will say is that, you know, based on what that landscape analysis showed us, it gave us at least a starting point to know what the breakdown was of all of the Youth Services Bureau, and we stand in position to work closely with the Juvenile Justice Policy Oversight Council to get under the, the outcomes that are produced by those specific entities.
Can I ask a question? I was going to raise my hand, so I didn't seem sufficient. Okay, so I, I hear you, and I, I learned that that there is no oversight over the YSBs or the JRBs. And we didn't, I didn't learn that until really this, this past fall. The problem that I have with the statute, the way it is now, that says that the YSBs have no, that DCF has no oversight, someone needs to be have oversight over this, the, the YSBs, especially if they're calling themselves of the diversion network. In order for them to be a diversion network, there's, there's got to be transparency and accountability. And for the dollars that they are asking for, I, I think, it, I mean, I, I just know as an appropriations person, I can't, I can't agree to it unless we have better structures. As it is, they are receiving a pretty high amount. And I get the idea that it's a, it's a partnership with the cities, the state, and then DC, the, the state and, I guess, the cities and the state. And we've been funding them pretty regularly. And there is a maintenance of effort for each one of the towns, which I think is, is very commendable. But they're asking us to fund the majority of this, the bulk of it. And in order for that to ever happen, at least from my standpoint, there's got to be somebody who's monitoring them. There's got to be somebody who is making sure that their skill levels are equitable to the amount of money that we, that I looked at the landscape, and many of us did, in, in the JJPOC, and we all kind of learned a lot. And, you know, we should be willing to grow and learn from what we've learned in that. And the landscape, it had, it was self-report. It didn't identify who needed what skills. It didn't identify a, a solid communication or reporting mechanism. So I just, i- i- if, if it changed, if the statute changes, then is DCF ready to, to take on more of the oversight function of somebody's got to, I'm, I'm, $6 million is insane. And we're already putting in, I think, it's, your fiscal agent can tell us, but I think it's like $4 million now in three different categories. And many of those areas don't have the volume that our big cities have, which is where the the real issues are coming from. So I'm hoping that we can come to a a, an agreement, because I have a YSB bill that is very controversial, I know, because, because I like, a lot of the YSBs are not happy with it. But I'm saying I want accountability. And I want, I want somebody to be responsible to make sure that taxpayer dollars are going into what is needed for this system. So I say that.
Rep. Walker, you make a very fair point. And the one, you know, another thing that my team and I have discovered as we really wanted to answer the spirit of this question and the overall concerns related to that, that the JJPOC have expressed with related to accountability of the Youth Services bureaus related to diversion outcomes and other outcomes for kids that are serviced there, particularly through state appropriated funds. The infrastructure, I believe, is where the problem is at this point. And I think you're absolutely right that somebody needs to have oversight over that particular area. So what we hear from our partners in the judicial branch is that how they define their role is the kind of post-adjudication of kids and placement and beyond. And then DCF has its share of children related on the child protection piece. I think what happened when the statutory responsibility for juvenile justice shifted to CSSD in the judicial branch, this area that you have honed in on is the part that doesn't have a home. So I think that that, you know, as you were talking about realizing the responsibility for whose is it, DCF viewed our role during this time as simply a pass-through of fiduciary, but the infrastructure related to who actually does what you're asking to do, I think that's the part that didn't get tightened up with the transition over to CSSD. And so DCF stands willing and ready to work with the chairs of the JJPOC and the broader body to clean that up.
I think the, the part that you, you mentioned exactly, it played out. And
It did.
As we learned the whole thing, there was a lot of assumptions. And, you know, some assumptions are, are, are the biggest part that's a problem. And the YSBs want to call themselves with a diversion. And I said, so that, that, that term right there makes it an in-between. So in the YSB bill that I did, I took it into account and said it would be a collaborative between DCF and the judicial branch to come up with how that portion is regulated. And, and it has to come sooner than later. But it's important that, you know, they, they should be diversion. They should be diversion. They should not have to, the whole purpose is so they don't
Agreed. Yeah, agreed. I, I, you know, I liken it to the prevention aspects of DCF and really preventing kids from coming into foster care. There's lots of activities that could happen before that outcome. So I, I kind of see them in the same vein, and we stand ready to kind of have those conversations about how we tighten up the infrastructure of that gap because we want kids to be successful. So the answer to the question as it is, it's currently supported by base, based on how things are written right now. But as you, you've indicated, Rep. Walker, there's some additional action that are, that are occurring that might give us an opportunity to be a lot more precise and accountable in this particular gap area for that, those Youth Services bureaus.
I, I just want to have, I want to have kids have that one opportunity of the first time they, they get some, kids are, I don't say they're stupid, kids are mindless.
It's the, the, the immature prefrontal cortex that have them doing reckless things that you know, as we often see, you know, just mistakes that they make. And so we, we agree with that. We totally agree with that.
So I look forward to our, our, our conversation. But I, I will say there's no way that I, as Appropriations Chair, will just give $6 million to somebody and say, oh, yeah, go do what you want, and then, you know, then tell us about it later. No, that has, does not happen.
Absolutely understood, nor should you.
Thank you.
I, I'd like to say I agree with what Representative Walker is saying. I've heard, I would like to understand also what we're proposing because I hear a lot of frustration from the people who are doing the YSBs and the JRBs, that there's no accountability. There's nobody to help them when families decide to just not do anything. They can't go back to the courts. They have nowhere to go, and they're watching these kids just spiral worse and worse until they commit a crime that they can't get out of a JRB or a YSB for. And they're, they're struggling. So I, I understand the desire for more money, but I think we need to, we need to put some more supports and guardrails around this process. Because, you know, right now, these boards are out there. And like, I know in my towns, the YSB and the JRB, there, there's town employees. They're just like, they're not, they're not trained to be like, you know, enforcement, how to like, do, like, we're literally taking our human resources people, people that are town employees to do this, and they have no supports whatsoever to try to make a change in these kids' lives and these families' lives, get these families, get the parents involved, and, you know, kind of get these kids on the straight track. So I, I agree with Tony. I'm not, I am not going to agree to just throw money at this because it's not, the process is not working. It's not doing what we need it to do. So we need to figure out how to, how to make this model, which is a good model, actually work.
We, we agree that the, the infrastructure as it currently stands is not designed to do what, where, it's not yielding what the expected responses are. So, you know, a- and I, I think what also has to happen is to determine the role that child protection plays in that, and the role that CSSD plays in that, and whether or not there's a combination of that to fill the gap, to divert children from further penetration into that system, and that, so we don't blur the lines in terms of the judicial pieces of things. Because there, you know, when you talk about the accountability of kind of the teeth behind following through with those, some, some of those services that typically happens in court, we want to do that before it even gets to that.
I agree. You know, I think we do, but we have to give people the tools that they need
Yeah, agreed.
to be able to do that. And when somebody outright refuses to do it, then we have to be able to have a process in there that does give them the ability to go back to the court to say, this family is totally non-compliant. What do we do? Because that's the part, when we're not doing that, all we're doing is teaching these kids and these families that there's no accountability to this action. And it just pushes them further down the path of crime. There's, there's no accountability to it. So, you know, we have to, we have to make sure that what we're doing here is actually teaching these kids that, you know, they don't want to go down this path. And how do we, how do we do that? How do we get the whole family involved to do that? So it's, it's a big issue, right? This is, this is a really big issue with the spite that we saw in car thefts and stuff like that. How many of those kids could we have helped? You know, if we had a solid process in place that was really going to help divert this, you know, that's my problem is $6 million is not something I can find in the couch cushions. And I don't have any confidence that the plan is doing what it needs to do right now. So I'm anxious. I'm, I'm happy to work with anybody. I would love to see this become a a more fruitful process, a really good structured process, going to help these youths and, you know, get them back on the right track and help these families kind of, you know, become one to kind of work against this. So with Tony, I, I want to see something here that's going to put some accountability in here, a solid process that we can then go back to and say, look, this is what's working. I don't feel like I can say that right now, unfortunately.
I, Tammy, I think we, we're on the same page with the Commissioner. And I will say from, from Gary Robish, Report Supportive Services Division, we've been trying to get our hands around what the YSBs and JRBs are doing. But that has, that information has evaded us two years now. And yet they say we need training, but we, we said, what training do you need? Because you've got DCF, as the Commissioner said, we could use a lot of the models that she, they use for, for foster families and things that they're developing. And then Court Supportive Services has, has a whole plethora of ways that they train their, their probation officers to divert kids from the system. So I think we have two great agencies that can help us, but we just have to get the YSBs and the JRBs to understand that. And we will. We're going, I, I have every faith in all of us making making this happen. So thank you very much, everybody.
To be continued. Thank you, Rep Walker. Thank you, Rep Newt. The next question, question fifteen is a similar. It's related to um juvenile review boards. And again, additional conversations related to that.
Same conversation, next.
Next is uh sixteen is annualized funding on Family First Prevention Services Act, including um for the budget of twenty four, twenty five. Um so we are currently for members of appropriations who haven't been following um Family First, we are currently in the implementation phases of the CME. And so this question was specific to where are we just in the process of FFPSA and Family First. So um Mel, you want to break down this answer and the sub questions that are here?
Sure. So in FY twenty three, we were given um an allocation of one point one million dollars to expand the services that we can claim against Families First. That was annualized um at one point five million in future years. So what you're seeing with that three hundred and seventy seven thousand increase for FY twenty four is getting us to the one point five million that was allocated last year. Um so what we did with that one point five million, uh we are estimating that once implemented into our service array, that will um bring in approximately one point seven million in new um in new Families First federal reimbursements. Which will, which nets us about two hundred thousand dollars as a state in revenue gain. I did just want to point out, just because of the way the question was worded, we are currently claiming against Title IV E. Title IV E has traditionally from the feds been for reimbursement of um the expenses that DCF incurs investing in kids in care. Families First is federal reimbursement for investments that we make in keeping kids out of care. So we bring in roughly a hundred and two million dollars a year in federal reimbursement under traditional IV E. Families First is going to allow us to expand that claim um to start claiming against prevention-based services, services that kids keep keep kids out of home or out of DCF care. Um so that is really subsection A of that question. Um and then if you look at um B, that breaks down the services that we are expanding with the one point five million that we were given. All four of those services are in the Connecticut in Connecticut's Families First Prevention Plan. Um and uh we are expanding those in our service array for a total of three hundred and eighty eight new slots of service um against that one point five million.
Rep Walker, go right ahead.
Uh yes, I'm sorry, my my math is bad. So if we've committed one point five and uh first family is going to, it's going to bring in one point seven additional dollars. How how is, so is it, when you say two million dollars in in new monies, you're not counting, you're you're just saying just new money, you're not counting the the combination of the two to say that we're going to be offering over three million dollars worth of services. Is that that was, am I right in that?
No, we're offering one point five million in new services. With those new services, we'll be able to bill the federal government one point seven million dollars. So you will see, you'll actually see revenues come into the state at one point seven million dollars. The investment of the one point five is a net gain of two hundred thousand dollars to the state.
Okay, so we bill about two hundred thousand dollars more than what we are investing.
Correct.
So the two hundred thousand dollars more is the the difference is is what we gain by doing it?
So if you remember, if you recall, Rep Walker, and your question is right down the the line of many other jurisdictions. The Family First Prevention Services Act was the opportunity for the federal government to reimburse states for prevention-related activities. But what we're learning as we implement is that the benefit, particularly for states like ours that have a robust community-based service system already, as we um look to claim these additional resources, there's a lot of effort that's being put in with, you know, a nominal return on that. So but what we know is that it's the the first step in the Fed's effort to reimburse states for prevention-related activities because typically the reimbursement comes to states on foster care-related activities, but because we have already many of these service types, um the additional amount that we're able to claim now is 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 not really that much.
Okay. So so these are, these are things that we never had, we've never had the reimbursement for.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Um anything else on on Family First or we can move on?
Uh Representative Exum has her hand raised.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
Tell me, I am not familiar with Family First. Could you just give me a brief um synopsis of what the program does?
Yes, so um it it typically, it's a it's purely a reimbursement structure from the federal government that recognized that often that the child welfare jurisdictions were um only being reimbursed for foster care-related activities. We um every jurisdiction in the country was expected to develop a prevention plan based on the identification and characteristics of children who would be candidates for foster care but for intervention activities that could prevent such placement. So what um uh a team of not just DCF folks, but four hundred community partners did in conjunction over a period of years was develop the prevention plan and identified evidence-based program models that showed promise and reducing the likelihood of kids to come into care. And those are what are highlighted there on the screen right now, those four. Um because Family First was super prescriptive as to what you could um claim against, those evidence-based models had to be a part of a clearinghouse that was identified and currently and and constantly updated with additional evidence-based service models. We have um an executive summary of Family First and the full prevention plan that we can uh provide for you. Or we can certainly have a conversation offline to um talk on the nuances of it, but that's generally in a nutshell. It's the Fed's way of reimbursing jurisdictions for prevention-related activities.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I could just read a synopsis on it, but just that helps me to understand it a bit. Thank you.
Certainly, we'll forward that to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. You can continue on.
Um pro the not question number seventeen um asked about waitlists for all of our three hundred and thirty programs operated by the hundred private providers. So the question was, how many private providers do we have? We provided the response of a hundred um delivering three hundred and thirty services. And then the subset question was um how many have waitlists? And how many are also funded under Medicaid? So uh what we did was break down the service type and the types of services that have a waitlist. And if they carry a waitlist, whether they're direct direct service and whether or not they have to come through DCF. Um so due to the nature of the services provided by our contracted service array, the acuity and the needs of children and uh that work with children and families working with DCF, many of DCF contracted providers do not use a waitlist process as the child and family cannot wait for services. In cases where there are services that are not available for a referred family, DCF will identify an alternative service modality to meet the identified needs immediately. So the waitlist summary is listed there um in that first chart. Just give the committee a minute to take a look at at that to see if there's any questions on the waitlist summary. Um so currently eighty nine programs that are operated in the twelve service types that currently have waiting lists. Of those eighty nine programs, sixty seven percent have a waitlist. And so underneath that next chart talks about which of those programs hold a waiting list. And there's broken out by the service type. You can scroll. I think it's broken down. Yep. The second part of that question had to do with contracted providers that also have um Medicaid income or waitlist for specific information for waitlist for Medicaid billing and DCF contracted programs. Mel, do you want to talk about these two because they they there's a nuance here?
Sure. So we included an attachment. It's um attachment seventeen and seventeen A. Um and it breaks down each of our service types and whether or not they're Medicaid eligible. Um and at the moment, only nine of our service types um do also bill Medicaid. So they're split funded between um Medicaid billing and DCF straight grant funding. Subsection A uh speaks to our performance measures. Uh we included that also as an attachment. Um it breaks down all of the things that our providers report to us on a monthly basis that gets aggregated into um annual performance measures. And then subsection B speaks to, it answers the question around private provider staff reimbursement, whether or not we um establish specific salary rates in our contracts. And the answer is that we don't. Um we do see what staff are getting paid um at each individual staff level. Uh but we do not dictate to our private providers what they have to pay their staff.
Representative Walker followed by Representative Johnson.
Thank you, thank you guys. Um so when we had our public hearing uh the the last uh last night, for everyone was anyhow, um what we do is instead of letting people have continuous conversations, we talk to them offline. I had several people come to me and say that they um they have been on a long waitlist for ICAPS. And that um they they have not gotten any services. And I look here and it says waitlist and you have NA. And then the other one was um I guess MDFT, well, we do MDFT, but so I guess my my question is if you are saying that ICAPS is not reimbursable, then what do you do with the families that need that intensive care? Because that is intensive care that they provide.
So ICAPS is one of those programs that's not a DCF contracted um service. It's um purely community-based. Um and Michael, can you, you've been sitting on the working groups related to ICAPS with DSS. Can you elaborate a little bit more on the ICAPS piece of things? Because it it's not one of DCF's contracted services.
Sure, sure. It's it's a twofold issue. Um uh for those who don't know, it's uh intensive in-home psychiatric, I mean, children's adolescent program. And it is challenged due to one, um because it's intensive and it's in home and the amount of intensity and hours spent in home uh has to be done by a licensed masters level uh staff. There's a tremendous amount of turnover with that service model. And many of our providers who deliver that service, not our providers, but their providers who deliver that service uh struggle uh with keeping uh staff for the model. The model is a uh kind of Connecticut developed model at Yale. Uh they are the owners of the model and what DCF fund is Yale itself as the model owner to continue to do fidelity, management of the provider network and all of that. All of the providers who deliver that service get reimbursed from Medicaid for the service. There's no grant funding to providers uh to deliver the service. The Medicaid rate back in the day when it first kind of rolled out uh was significant enough uh to keep staff and was competitive enough. But now, one of the challenges that Medicaid is facing, that that providers are facing that caused uh Medicaid uh to have to to support them was that the hourly rate or the annual rate of a ma- masters level licensed clinician uh in that model was like fifty five or sixty thousand a year. Elsewhere, particularly in the commercials and the private plans, it was like seventy five, eighty grand a year. And so a lot of staff was leaving to do that. So to try to stem off some of the uh staff erosion in the model, uh Medicaid recently increased this rate uh by fifteen percent uh to to provide, provide those ICAP providers with enough supports to give rate increases to the clinicians that are there. And so the the waitlist and the delay in getting people in was due to them not having the staffing and their staff issues was due to them not being competitive with salary. So hopefully with this increase that occurred about a month or so ago, uh those providers will be able to now compete and get provide, get the necessary uh clinical staff in to do the work. But mind you, it it is a set of work, though, that in the grand scheme of things, when people have started to make some career choices post COVID, not many folks want to go and spend eight to ten hours a week doing in-home clinical care.
So so that's why we have a waitlist right now. Because we don't have anything an alternative for that intensive care type of program.
No, we do have alternative services. ICAPS is the service that folks wanted and has been traditionally the premier go-to service for families with children who are having uh you know, a a acute level of psychiatric needs for for that that intensive in home. There are other intensive in-home programs that exist. MDFT, uh functional family therapy, um um MST, multi-systemic therapy, those are all intensive in-home programs.
Okay, well, I I I did, I did have a gentleman come up for a large group. And he said that we have about five hundred families that are waiting for ICAPS. And because we don't do it because of the the number of things that you have have um identified, then what are we doing for the families that need those types of services? And so I don't want, because it it'll take a long time, but we really need to have a a a response to that because I know that um I'm going to get calls about this. And we should be thinking about what are we going to offer the families, but not offering them a step down. What do we offer? Because the intensive care is what their children need. And so we as a state have to figure out how to do that, whichever way is uh necessary. So I I would just ask that you send that response to um Susan Keane as soon as possible so that because we're we're going to start going to more specific things, but I think we need to figure out if we've got over five hundred families, that's a problem. And I, please, I don't want to have all those people send me their requests for ICAPS, because that would, that would shut down my um my email.
I I I I also think along with the increase of the Medicaid rates, Rep Walker, all of the investments on the children's behavioral health side that we outlined in our ARPA response will also assist with the full continuum of behavioral health services. And so um I I truly believe once all of those things are stood up, as some of them are underway, some of them are implemented as this rate increase, I I do believe that those bottlenecks in the system will start to level off because of the large investment that you all made um during last session on the children's behavioral health side. So that's much broader than this. The answer here um speaks to waitlists on contracted providers with DCF. The broader question, as you're alluding to, is on the children's behavioral health side, which I believe along with the rate increases to ICAPS and all of the investments of the continuum of children's behavioral health service types, you will, we'll start to see the a loosening of that bottleneck.
Okay, I I I I I hope we get to that because this is a long time. That money has been there. And I know it's not your your issue. It's somebody else's issue that we as legislators are hearing everywhere. But thank you, and I look forward to that.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to make sure, I just want to be clear. You said, please get something to the committee. And I think you may have broken up a little bit. I just want to be clear what you would like from us. I I didn't catch that. I'm sorry.
I'd like to know there are five hundred people that I've been told that are on a waitlist. What is Connecticut doing to get them services? And and if you're saying that there are other models there that are out there, then what are we doing? And is Yale saying that they don't have any of these teams that we probably could be paying for it with more ARPA money so that we can address the needs of this families out in in Connecticut as opposed to just not doing anything? So we need to have a plan.
I I would, I would just offer Representative Walker that that response to the question is not necessarily a DCF response. Our administrative service organization is the one who manages the utilization of that beacon or Carillon right now. Because it's a Medicaid solely funded service, DSS, and the whole partnership, it's about Because it's a Medicaid solely funded service, DSS, and the whole partnership, it's about that. So it would have to be a a response crafted by the partnership, not necessarily by DCF as it relates to the medic, the um, the uh ICAPS program. Because it may be five hundred today, it could be two hundred tomorrow. We don't have that data. We don't manage that waitlist data that comes from the utilization manager.
Michael, I'm sorry, Deputy Commissioner Williams. We'll call the meeting together if we have to.
Okay.
But it's got to be addressed. And and somehow we've got to come up with a structure that addresses the families. This is what Representative Exum is crying for as she builds the mental health system. So we, when we come up to obstacles like this, this is where we roll up our sleeves a little a little higher and we spend a little bit more time around the table to come up with what we can do for our families. So thank you and thank you, thank you, madam.
Thank you, Representative Johnson, followed by Representative Exum.
Uh, thank you so much and thank you for those good questions, Representative Walker. I really appreciate that that insight. Um, I'm really concerned about how we're dealing with intimate partner violence and um how that works with respect to the supportive housing for families and survivor care. And is that, do we have data on how any of those types of things are being addressed in terms of how they, how they mesh together? Uh, do you have an analysis in that si- that situation? And then I have one more follow-up question after that.
Yeah, each of the service types that are outlined in the um chart that are, that's there um all have um program review directors that can give us the qualitative data behind the services that are being delivered and what the waitlist looks like and, you know, what what other services we have in our continuum. This is just an example of those that have waitlists. Um, but we have the the full um three hundred and thirty services, that service types that are delivered through DCF that might have some overlap to 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 those.
Well, I was thinking more that there probably was some type of correlation between intimate partner violence and say supportive housing for families and survivor care. And I was just wondering, in terms of how the data looks, uh, is there, is that, is that being addressed? Uh, so this is some kind of correlation between.
Yeah, I I think I understand the question better now. Um, I know that our PI system is not sophisticated enough to do a through line to determine the overlay of um program participants in those, but your point is well taken in terms of families who may have um a characteristic of intimate partner violence, having housing uh insecurity and then the the piece related to survivor care. I do know that our data infrastructure doesn't, can't give us a report that will kind of show the overlay of those. Um, uh, does anyone else on the DCF team have a better response than that? But because I I understand. Go ahead, Deputy Commissioner Williams, you have something?
Yeah, just to pull them apart, um, the connection between the three really, really isn't there. The survivor care program that's listed there is a support program for young folks who are trafficked, who are victims of human trafficking. And it is the intervention that is uh given to them uh as survivors of trafficking uh to support their recovery and their healing. But that's usually children under the age of eighteen who are being served by our our system uh who's who receives that, 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 that uh service type. Uh, the supportive housing for families program, it's for those families that we serve uh that are either on an ongoing open case or being re-unified. This gives them an opportunity to get a a subsidy, uh, a subsidy, rent subsidy with uh case management supports uh because housing was viewed as one of the factors that's contributing to uh the possible risk factors in the family. And to mitigate that risk, uh, giving them affordable housing with supports uh is one of our strategies we have at DCF uh for families. Then the intimate partner violence program is not necessarily connected. Those families could take, have access to supportive housing, but it's, it's an intervention around safety. Uh, whenever a a family comes to our attention where violence part, intimate partner violence has occurred, uh, our interventions here is to to make sure we provide the best safety assessment and intervention on behalf of the victimized parent and the children that are involved in the family to assure first and foremost child safety. And secondly, a response to that uh victimized parent. And we even in this model that we have intimate partner violence uh do work with the perpetrator. So they're not necessarily all connected services.
Okay, thank, thank you for that explanation. And and then the other, the other aspect of this that I'm wondering about is uh I can see the the discussion regarding the uh questions uh uh in the correlation between the Department of uh Social Services paying for these services under the Medicaid program. Uh, but I also am wondering, in terms of the special education situation, uh, how are we correlating these services in the school system for special needs students? Do we have an idea of where uh where that is being addressed?
That that likely would be a question that could be um further delineated through CSDE. Um, I, on the children's behavioral health side, there is a significant portion, particularly of federally allocated funds that went directly either to municipalities or through CSDE related to behavioral health services uh distributed in schools. Um, the closest response that I could probably offer for that was what we provided on emergency mobile psych, which often um sometimes is generated through a school system. But I'm, I'm not necessarily sure DCF is the keeper of that um specific information related to special ed needs in schools unless a family is, a child is committed to us.
Well, that's what I was wondering, uh, the the children that are committed to you and the circumstances, that that was kind of like what I was thinking. Thank you for that. And I was, I was just wondering, in terms of that, do we have data that correlates how the school system is addressing the special needs of the students who are in DCF services? And how is that, you know? I think that these things are all connected in my own mind. Uh, but I'm just wondering how, how we're taking a look at them uh from uh, from the financing point of view and what the students might need, depending on what the cir- circumstances are, whether it's intimate partner violence between the parents uh or some other problem with the developmental problem of the child uh that is uh so difficult that the parents are having difficulty managing it. I mean, those are, or it's the extreme poverty that the family is subjected to because of the lack of a social safety net that we have or don't have in this state. Uh, so I'm just wondering, you know, in terms of how we're looking at the data for those types of things.
So for um, in a couple of ways, for children who are committed to DCF, each of our DCF area offices has an educational consultant who um is available to our ongoing services, social workers related to children who are in care. It's the expectation that um DCF has educational plans um specific to the children who are committed to the state. There's another subset of families that would be working with us um that, whose children are still at home that might be working in ongoing services that would have less of a DCF touch and more of a um follow-through by their local LEA. Um, and then the last piece would be children who are in our um facilities are followed by USD two, which is a unified school district that DCF is, is, that DCF maintains. So their special education needs are very specific and delivered in their setting. Um, and then DCF also has um now the administrative responsibility related to children who are um coming and going from juvenile justice facilities.
Okay, and and that would also include us, the, the poverty uh situation and some of these circumstances.
Um, I I I would say somewhat, but um not exclusively to DCF. So that's where the hesitation is related to the responsibility um from a, an appropriation standpoint. Um, many families who um are receiving services through Medicaid um oftentimes find themselves um involved with the department. But, you know, I, I, I hesitate because conflating poverty with neglect is oftentimes how how families come involved, become involved with the child protection system unnecessarily. And I know that you've been a champion for that not to happen. So um, so that, that's where my, my hesitation comes in this particular conversation.
Well, thank you so much for that and I really appreciate your answers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Rep Johnson.
Great, thank you. I'm going to let uh Rep Exum go, but we do need to wrap up because we are at ten o'clock. Go for it, Representative.
Oh, I will be, I will be very quick. I just have a clarifying question, something I didn't realize. Um, as far as going back to ICAPS, I'm sorry. Um, the, so children within DCF, they are not able to be participants of the ICAPS program? Is that correct? Or is it, it's not a contract, a DCF contracted service is what I think I heard. So, but I thought they were able to participate.
They certainly can, yeah. It's, ICAPS is not um a contracted service um by DCF. However, children and families who are working with DCF either in our in-home services or committed to us can, can um get ICAP services just as the general public can.
Okay, and then one of the things I, questions I had regarding the other in-home programs, and thank you for clarifying that. Um, like, like ICAPS, I think, I'd like to understand the difference, like with the MDFT or MST. Are those programs six months like ICAPS? Because one of the things that is nice about the ICAPS program is just that intensive. I don't want to, you know, belabor it, but you know, it's six months long. Is, are those programs as long?
Yeah, so I, I, I think that that's where um Deputy Commissioner Williams is trying to make the distinction that that is the length of time and the intensity of ICAPS are, is, are what families have said they wanted and need in the children's behavioral health space. I think um to answer the question more broadly, we probably should schedule some time to step through those evidence-based models so you can know the distinction of, because I, you know, we'll have them all charted out for you as well as the new services that we believe after looking at the full range of the lightest touch to the deepest end that, you know, we put in place as a result of the allocations last session that are underway right now to kind of fill some of those gaps and what we believe the level of intensity there would be um to give you a fuller picture. So it's probably time for us to sit down and give you kind of a breakdown of all of that. But it's certainly a a really good question as it relates to ICAPS and its place in the full continuum.
Okay. And I would like.
Oh, sorry. It sounds like Deputy Commissioner has a quick answer that he can relate to that.
Just to add one point to 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 this clarification, the, all the other intensive in-homes, we have MDFT, MST, FFT are all national evidence-based programs. ICAPS is not an evidence-based program. It is yet to perceive that status. It's, it's, it's Connecticut ingrown, but it has not achieved the status of being evidence-based yet.
That's right.
That's right. I I do understand that. I do understand that. I, but I, I do know it's a preferred program and uh here locally and um, and they do have good outcomes. But you're right, it's not evidence-based, I am aware of that. But I would love to have the conversation, be a part of that and really look at the impact of all the things we put into place and see where we are and um, and see where the holes are and, you know, wh- what the need is and make sure that we're not missing anyone in that continuum. But I know, I could talk about this all day and I will not, or Gillian might get me. Okay, thank you.
And it deserves that level of attention. We will certainly reach out.
Thank you, thank you so much.
How many years, how many years have we been using ICAPS as a major uh program in the state?
What is it, ten, Michael, or longer?
Longer than ten, it's about eighteen plus. It started out with Kid Care.
I just, I just wanted to know because for eighteen years we've been using a program. So I just, just wanted to find out. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to kind of, it seems like I'm following Tony all day today. But, you know, if we've been using this program for eighteen years and I've heard a lot about this program from Tammy, but it's not evidence-based, how do we know that it's the program that we should be using? What do we have to do to figure out if it is, you know?
There is, um, there's an evaluation and the um ICAPS collaborative um has to determine whether or not that um evidence-based um evaluation fits the criteria for um well-supported and the whole, it's a, it's a complicated process, but we can offer what, what has happened over the years related to that particular service type. Um, again, outside of of DCF, but we can offer some history there.
I'd like to see that because I've heard a lot about this program, but I also want to make sure that we're, we're, we're spending money and we're doing things on the, the programs that are going to, you know, do we have results from this showing that it's been successful? What's our, what's our um success rates from utilizing this for eighteen years? If we're the only state doing it, and after eighteen years, if it's not evidence-based, that kind of worries me a little bit.
Or they've chosen not to do that, to to evaluate themselves through that criteria. But there's a whole, there's a whole explanation for for that whole process. There, there's a whole explanation for that. Not that we, not that DCF did, but we can certainly.
I'm going to, I'm going to jump in because we're five minutes over. I encourage you all to potentially, you know, organize that separate meeting and I think continue the dialogue. Um, but I want to thank the Commissioner and her team for coming back um and providing us with this great information. Thank you so much. Oh, Commissioner, you are muted if you're talking to us, but maybe you're not.
So I just wanted to to make sure that we've um, that, that I just, we provided written responses to all of the committee's um requests. And if there's any additional sidebars or conversations that are needed, my um subject matter experts stand ready to schedule those um exponentially.
Fantastic, thank you so much. Uh, for the subcommittee members, please stay on. Um, DSS is either, I think they're already in. Okay, I, uh, Commissioner Reeves, is your team all with us?
I am counting everything and it appears that they are all, there was Nick, yes, and now we're all here. So thank you.
Thank you. So I think we'll do what we just did with um the, the previous department. If you don't mind sharing screen and jumping back in where we last left off.
Yes, okay. So I think Dave is, Dave will be sharing his screen and we will start with the uh, the questions that you specifically asked us to respond to. There we go. Uh, and then I know that Representative Newt here had a number of questions that were part of our original response and we'll review those as well. Uh, so to start with, we did provide a brief explanation of the different Husky groups. There is a pretty extensive PowerPoint presentation that I think we provided a link to in our previous responses. So you can see here that Husky A and B covers what most people uh think of as our Medicaid program and CHIP for children. And then C is where we uh provide supports for our long-term services and for those with disabilities, which we also call MedConnect. And then D is for the residents who are age nineteen but not sixty-five yet and don't have any dependent children there. Um, you know, folks that fall outside of those other categories. And even within all of these categories, there are subcategories, but this, that would probably take up five pages in and of itself. So we just wanted to just kind of give you the broad overview of what we mean when we refer to the different Husky groups. We can move to the next question, Dan. Thank you. Then uh in the, there you go, thank you. So in the, in the next question, you had asked if we could speak directly to the breakout and the caseloads and the uh cost per member essentially for Husky D for the kids and the pregnant women. And I think part of the response that we got here is that, that, that the numbers look very high. But it also includes that this is a relatively new program for kids and pregnant women. So we did expect the up, the take-up rate to be fairly significant in the beginning of the program and indeed it is. It's, it hasn't been that long, so we are just waiting to see where this thing. You can see these numbers are as of the quarter end of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. So that was just the end of last year. Typically, when there is a new service that's introduced into a Husky program or any insurance program, you do see a significant amount of take-up in the beginning and then some leveling off after that. So with the leveling off, we do expect that um per member uh, that cost per member rate to drop a bit. We don't really know, we don't have enough history to know, but this is the breakout as we have the history right now. And then, looks like. As her hand.
Yep, so this is, thank you. This is the increase for the um, the, the green line is the increase for um the pregnant women, the immigrant pregnant women, correct?
Yes, that's right.
And we have no idea, like, that's only representative of, do we know how many people? Do we know like what the potential that it's going to get up to? Do we have any idea of when this is going to level off? Because we went from two hundred and eighty-two dollars to one thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars. That's huge.
Historically, and that's why we all kind of offered the band one and the band two, because you can see the difference historically, uh, and my team can help me with this. Programs like this tend to level off probably in the middle of their second year. Uh, and my team can help me with this. Programs like this tend to level off probably in the middle of their second year. So when we have lots of people that come in at first, it's because they didn't have any access to any kind of other care. But uh, they may come in again with a second child. That doesn't always happen. But we usually see a leveling off and somewhere in the middle of the second year to the beginning of the third year. So since we're just in the beginning of our first year, we expect that maybe in twenty-twenty-four, we'll start to see a leveling off of this and that the uh, the per-member cost will go down a bit. We can't tell you um, by how much, and we can get you the number of people, because that was actually a question I had as well when I looked at these numbers. So we can actually get you the number of people.
The enrollment numbers are, are, are just down, if, if uh, Gee could scroll down, you can see the enrollment numbers in these programs. And you'll see that Husky B, Band One and Two, the children are longstanding coverage groups. And you see the new one introduced there on the right-hand side uh, for the prenatal coverage in the last three quarters.
So about fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Almost fifteen hundred.
And that's about where we expected it to be and we anticipate that it'll level off in that range. I would really take that first quarter PM, PM data with a grain of salt. It was the first few months of a new program. Um, and then we, as, as the Commissioner has referenced, we'll start to see that leveling off over time. We'll have a better sense of what the average cost will be for that population.
That's still significantly higher. Um, do we have?
It's kids versus pregnant women, right?
Well, yeah, I, I understand. I understand what it's for. Do we have a, a, a total cost of what this specific ad program is adding to this classification? Like, what's the total cost for just this band?
So it's a chip program, so it's sixty-five percent federally uh, funded. I just want to note that.
Even this piece? Even this piece with illegal immigrants?
It's, it's, it's a covered service under CHIP. Yes, correct. It's still federally covered. It's the unborn child option is what it's called under the CHIP program. And it covers the pregnant woman and the child, and that is the coverage basis. There's a, the PM, PM, I don't know, Nick, if you could, if you could um, clarify whether that's the state share or uh, the overall cost. I'm not quite sure whether, what, what was displayed in that first chart.
Yeah. Uh, so the PM, PM is based on total gross cost. Um, Peter's correct. This is a federally matchable um, additional coverage through the unborn child option available through um, the, the CHIP program. So we will receive, um, and we do receive the, the extra uh, sixty-five percent federal match on those expenses. The total, excuse me, total estimate, the total spend gross for those three quarters depicted here was just over ten million, um, approximately ten point five million after uh, you know, offsets for cost sharing, drug rebate. Um, I would just note that that's all based on a date of payment. So when you see that two hundred and eighty-two dollars in that first quarter, it's, it's really a, a data point that is uh, not indicative of where this program is going to go, because you've got people enrolled, but you don't yet have their full claim.
They don't have their payments, right? You know, they haven't had the babies or they haven't received all the care.
I would also note that as this was a new program, many of the people we saw come on right away and many of the costs we saw initially were people who were already in an impatient stay. So obviously much more of that uh, you know, higher cost right away. Um, so as that enrollment picks up in a normal uh, you know, run out of claims for both the higher and the lower cost individuals in the program, the uh, PM, PM we anticipate will level out. Um, I should also note that the estimates did assume, but we didn't assume a, a normal Husky B child PM, PM. Um, original estimates assumed approximately a seven hundred and fifty dollar per member per month cost once fully annualized. So there was never an expectation that the cost for this program would be in that two hundred and fifty to two hundred and twenty-five range. Uh, that was never the expectation. Uh, so just to, to clarify.
Yeah, but it wasn't also the thirteen hundred. So, um, so the
Again, that's a very small snapshot of costs.
Uh, I understand how, I understand how PM, PMs work better than most. I, I, I get that. But if, you know, depending on the number of people that you have coming in, you're still going to incur these costs. You're just incurring them quicker without the other. Are you also then considering the uh, the children being added in um, under Husky B coverage going forward with the mother dropping off? Is that part of the projection?
Uh, that's correct. That's, it, it actually, the, the basis for the unborn child option is if you're in this income band at some point when the child's born, right?
They're automatically
It is, they would ultimately end up eligible for the CHIP program and providing the prenatal care upfront uh, where historically there hasn't been any, you know, leads to um, you know, a, a better continuum of care for the child once they end up on coverage under CHIP or, or Medicaid, depending upon what the income is at that point.
And, and Nick, this, that group of folk, the kids was already eligible prior to the prenatal care, right? Because they were born in the US.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and, and so it's more an artifact because other, or, or other pregnant women are, are uh, covered under Husky A and D. Is that, is that right?
Husky A.
Husky A, right.
It's, it's more an artif, like the PM, PM arises is, is an artifact of it just being covered on, for, for Medicaid reimbursement purposes under Husky B for, for this sort of odd situation, not, not because of any rise in cost.
Well, there's a rising cost. It's just it's not being contributed into the, of the bucket that the other ones are. So you'd have to compare the, to the two different populuses. But the, the ten point five million is that our portion or is that the total portion?
That's total growth, so we would receive approximately sixty-five percent match on that.
Sixty-five percent of that.
But for those first few quarters with the P, the Public Health Emergency still in place, uh, the match rate would be sixty-nine point three.
Yeah, but yeah, yeah, you're getting the higher match right now with the public health thing. Okay. Um, all right. I'd be interested to see if you have a, if you have any kind of forecast on numbers of people that would be in the program um, over the next couple of years, if you have any kind of indications of that. So we could look at the total net cost that we can expect to see.
So the original estimates for the program were based around fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred individuals. And that's still annually what we expect to serve per month. Those estimates were based on the fact that prior to rolling out the prenatal unborn child option, Medicaid through emergency Medicaid could cover the birth, um, you know, the, the actual labor and delivery for an undocumented uh, pregnant woman. So we utilized roughly what we had uh, for emergency Medicaid births for undocumented uh, pregnant women, which in the most uh, recent year leading up to doing the estimate was, I think, about fifteen hundred and one or fifteen hundred and ten. So that's what the basis for the, the number we anticipated to serve each month. Um, on, on the unborn child option and in, at the fifteen sixty that we've been at, we're still pretty close um, you know, to that original estimate.
Okay. So you don't think the number will climb? You think it's going to kind of stabilize around the fifteen, sixteen hundred mark?
That's our, that's what we believe at this point, yes. And that's what was originally in, included in the estimate. Um, you know, but like I said, I think the original PM, PMs were, were leveled out at closer to that seven fifty. In this initial first look, you know, we've seen some higher PM, PMs, uh, but the, the total enrollment in the program is still within you know, pretty close to what we had originally projected.
Do you think that's just a higher cost of care or higher uh, need for utilization? Um, what do you think is? I understand people were having babies right off the get-go, um, and that is the higher portion of it in that, but do you think this is indicative of a um, uh, a higher cost of care for this populace than, than without? Or is it, do you? What do you, what are you projecting it at?
What I, what I suspect is that this is a population that has historically had less access to, to healthcare uh, leading up to the rollout of this program. Um, and that there is a chance that there's, there's higher overall uh, costs associated with the group. Um, but again, I, I don't anticipate it to stay at that twelve sixty-five just based on uh, this, this small piece of data, but I would probably say uh, it's probably going to be higher than the seven fifty, maybe closer to that, that nine fifty. But again, that's just on very preliminary data.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much.
So the next question that was posed was uh, information around the baseline budget for postpartum coverage that began on four one. And what's the assumed caseloads? So some of those questions are answered by the charts that we included, but the governor's recommended budget is about five hundred and dollars in each biennium to cover postpartum care for undocumented pregnant women. And uh, in answer to some of the questions you posed, Representative, we think the number is, is closer to fourteen hundred, thirteen ninety. And with the per member per month plus the extra hundred and sixty-two dollars. So the, there, there is a possibility that it may exceed that budgeted number because they weren't receiving the previous months of uh, postpartum care under the uh, emergency Medicaid. But we don't have a strong indication of what that overage might be. But based on the numbers that we have and what's included in the governor's budget, we think that cost is going to be about five million dollars. Uh, then the next question was the average state cost for the non Hyde abortions. This one was a little more challenging to answer because uh, the providers, do we, we don't receive specific information about Hyde versus non Hyde eligible services because providers don't often ask that question. They just provide um, the service to women because we all know that um, Hyde requires a different level of inquiry that some providers do not engage in. So, and, and we don't collect that information. But the total spend, I guess if we could go just go down a bit, the, the total spend for Hyde is five point nine million dollars. Uh, and as I said, we don't really collect the Hyde versus the non Hyde, but that, that's the average state cost. So the, obviously for the non Hyde, that is total state cost. There's no share there because of, because it's totally non Hyde. So the covered CT, if I see Gee, I'm going to ask him to weigh in on this a bit. So we were asked to explain why it costs less. And the overall answer is that it costs less because we can leverage more of the federal money that we receive through tax credits, the cost sharing and through the ACA and ARPA money than we can if we have just uh, paying for this ourselves or a straight federal match. But uh, Gee, if you're available, which I see that you are, it perhaps would be helpful for you to provide some more detail.
Yeah. Um, and Commissioner got it exactly right. So uh, Covered Connecticut uh, is a fiscally efficient uh, program um, because it uses two separate big chunks of federal dollars. Um, the first are these things highlighted here, the kind of the regular credits that um, people get when buying health insurance on the, on the exchange, including the advanced premium tax credits, the cost sharing reductions, um, in, including uh, the additions uh, in, in the American Rescue Plan Act. So that's kind of the, the baseline. Um, as you know, Cover Connecticut is more generous than uh, just kind of buying health insurance on the exchange. Um, and we got and received a Cover Connecticut eleven fifteen waiver. So what that waiver does is for all of the expenses that weren't covered by bucket one, by the, the, the first thing and highlights, this Cover Connecticut waiver, eleven fifteen waiver gets fifty percent federal match on all the additional dollars. Um, so if you put those two big buckets together, the, the ones here and then the eleven fifteen waiver, um, the total federal share, we estimate at ninety-three percent of the cost of this program. And so that's Cover Connecticut. If in contrast, we had uh, just expanded Medicaid and not, not done this eleven fifteen waiver, uh, you know, the, the answer is it would have had a lower federal share. The exact answer is a little bit complicated. Um, so for individuals who um, uh, who uh, it, it's a mix. So, so, so some, some of that population would have gotten that fifty percent federal reimbursement for the folks between a hundred and thirty, above a hundred and thirty-eight percent of poverty who weren't otherwise eligible for Husky A um, would have gotten that fifty percent match. Um, and so, you know, you, you, you compare the ninety-three percent in the Cover Connecticut versus the, the lower amount that we would have gotten in Medicaid um, had we just expanded. And that's kind of the reason why uh, this program costs the state less money. The second part of the question, and, and I'm not going through all the details, happy to, if, if, if we want to get, if we want to geek out there, but the second part of the question, um, we just wanted to clarify that um, enrollment uh, in Cover Connecticut is lower than we had originally expected because the Public Health Emergency uh, lasted for longer than we had originally planned. So many of the members who would have gone on Cover Connecticut have simply stayed on Medicaid. Um, on the other hand, the earlier projections did not anticipate um, an adjustment that we're paying to carriers to cover the additional potential costs due to higher utilization, given that members don't have cost sharing. Um, so the net, net of those two things um, roughly cancel out in particular in the governor's budget. Uh, we, our friends at OPM have uh, have basically done all the adjustments and there's no anticipated access funds included in the governor's budget for Cover Connecticut because those two factors uh, roughly, roughly overlap. And then the last part of the question, Representative, I see your, your hand. I just wanted to finish it up before we get to it. Um, the last part of the question was uh, how much do we anticipate it would cost to expand to the Covered Connecticut to two hundred percent of FPL? Um, we anticipate that the state costs would be thirty to forty million dollars. Um, assuming no premium, uh, no premium or cost sharings uh, for members. Um, if uh, if we charged ten dollars a premium sharing per member per month, that thirty to forty million dollar figure would go down by an estimated one point eight million dollars um, each share per year. Um, and, and just to know any modification to the Cover Connecticut program, um, the income limit would require uh, an amendment to the eleven fifteen waiver with CMS. So there'd be um, some, a little bit of uncertainty over what exactly CMS would do and certainly some time before they would, they would say yes. Um, that helps. Um, and we'd love to try to answer questions that people have.
Sure. We've got Representative Nutio followed by Representative Dayton.
Thank you. Um, so this, I believe, was my question, or at least part of it was my question. So can you um, go back up the ninety-three percent, I think you said, right now, how much of that is ARPA?
Hmm. Uh, good question, Nick. I don't know if you, I don't know if you know that offhand, or we can follow up in writing.
I appreciate that because I'm concerned that, you know, we're funding a lot of this with ARPA and we're telling people that it's the cheaper option and then ARPA goes away and, you know, it becomes a more expensive option. Um, so I would really like to understand which portion of this is being funded with ARPA to get to that ninety-three percent subsidy because then seven percent is being paid through the general fund is what I'm kind of getting here. If ninety-three percent is subsidized, seven percent is being paid through the general fund. Um, and the difference between the fifty percent and then ninety percent enhanced, is that all due to the eleven fifteen waiver?
Um, great question. So uh, that, that ninety-three percent um, is uh, buil, building on these two buckets. One are, one are the advanced uh, the APTCs, the cost sharing reductions, both in the ACA and ARPA. That's kind of the base of it. And then on everything we pay above that, we're getting that fifty percent match. So represented, it's a combination of
A combination, it's blended, right? So it's, it's all of those pieces, then the blended piece of the fifty to get us up to the ninety-three.
Exactly.
Okay. So yeah, I would definitely like to understand the, each cost component that goes into there. And when ARPA goes away, what does that look like? And then um, I believe I was also the one that asked, you know, these plans are allowable to have cost sharing, whether it be somebody pay a PM, PM um, like they would for regular insurance or pay um, co-pays or co-insurance, however you want to do it. I understand that they're not really um, high deductible health plans, which is good. But I think we need to understand um, as ARPA goes away, what is the state portion going to be? Because then this is just Husky X at that point, right? It's just yet another Husky plan. Um, and with these, with the eleven fifteen waiver, we have the ability to have cost sharing, which I think is reasonable to say, you know, you have to pay X amount toward this, or you have to pay co-pays or whatever, however we want to look at doing it. But um, this is, I think this has the potential to, to grow pretty large. Now, if I'm looking at that correctly, for every ten dollar of PM, PM, you would reduce the thirty to, now the thirty to forty million. Um, that's going up to two hundred and it's currently at the, is it uh, one, one thirty-eight?
One, one seventy-five.
One seventy-five, currently at one seventy-five.
Yeah.
Um, thirty to forty million. And if you can get the numbers to just show um, after ARPA goes away, what's the balance, what's the balance that's coming out of the taxpayer fund? And then some ideas of um, you know, of, of PM, PMs or cost sharing that we could do that would reduce that. Um, I have an idea that the number is significantly higher than thirty to forty million.
Absolutely, Representative. And um, let me just clarify two, two quick things, really good questions. So I, I, I think you got this, but this is more for your colleagues. Uh, the, right now, we do not have uh, cost sharing or premiums for people on Cover Connecticut. Um, if we wanted to introduce that, um, uh, that would require uh, an amendment to our eleven fifteen waiver with CMS, which, which we could do. Wanted to, to highlight that. Uh, that pol, that policy uncertainty and that one point eight million dollars highlighted here, that, that was particular to this expansion. For going for that one seventy-five to two hundred, that, that expansion, we think would cost between thirty and forty million. And then that thirty, forty million would be a one point eight million dollars lower for every ten dollars uh, a premium cost sharing per month. Just wanted to clarify that. And then the second thing I just wanted to clarify with the, with ARPA, you're absolutely right. Bucket one, we talked about bucket one and bucket two. Bucket one does include, does include um, Does include ARPA money. I just wanted to clarify, I think you know this, but for other colleagues who aren't. In the in the health insurance industry, the the ARPA subsidy, this is not like one time ARPA money that the state was given. That's kind of part of the special. This was ARPA made the Obamacare, the Q H P health plans more affordable for Americans. Across the board. And you're right, it's possible that Congress, when those expire, will not extend them. And we can, we'll run the numbers showing you what what that ninety three percent would look like when that, when or if that happens. I just wanted to clarify, this is not, this is not kind of using state ARPA dollars, it's kind of federal ARPA subsidizing the exchange. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you for clarifying that, because then that is definitely at the whim of the the federal government. Are we using any of our state dollars for this?
Nick, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the answer is no. I'm just thinking if there's any consulting or anything like that. Dollars for Cover Connecticut, I think the answer is no.
Yeah, not any that that I know of. The state share, you know, that that seven percent would be covered by. Obviously, state dollars. But I I don't know of anything outside of the state share of expenses that would be covered by general fund.
So is that definitely going through the general fund and not through ARPA dollars to seven percent? I don't think we can use ARPA, right? Because on eleven fifteen, I don't think we can use the state ARPA on that, can we?
That's good. You know, I'm I'm not certain on that, but it is definitely general fund dollars that's covering the state share of of the program at this point.
Okay, and for the ARPA and the I R A funds there, if there's any way to get. Any indication of how long those are in the federal dollars, are they like part of their ongoing allocation that we know of? Or is this something that was like the one time funding? I think the Inflation Reduction Act had a lot of one time funding in it. So if there's any way, I don't know if you guys have that or not, but I just figured I'd put it out there, see if you do.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. Well, let's follow up in writing. It was very much on our radar when we were. Forming the program, obviously the I R A wasn't, but the the. The art, the timeline around the ARPA subsidies of Congress choose not to send, that is very much on our radar and something we we spoke extensively to C M S about. And let's follow up in writing with the details there. I think it's a good question.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Just very quickly, I believe it goes to the end of twenty twenty five. That's the federal law around the enhanced subsidies. If 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 I'm getting that piece of the question correctly, but we can also give it to you in writing.
I R A, is that the in reference to the I R A money?
That was, yeah, the I R A extension of the previously authorized ARPA funds is through the end of twenty twenty five.
Twenty twenty five, so it would get us through this budget at least. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Dayton.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and just wanted to follow up on a couple of things. This additional thirty to forty million would assume current rates and not any changes in any Medicaid rates. Is that correct?
That is correct. The the only reason representative that I'm hesitating a tiny bit is. Cover Connecticut is administered. Via the the Obamacare, the exchange, the Q H P platform. And so mechanically, if. You know, if the legislature made an adjustment to Medicaid rates, let's say, you know, paid providers more, that wouldn't immediately have a direct. That would not immediately have a direct mechanical impact on anything covered Connecticut because. The these provider rates are set by the carriers who operate on the on access health C T.
Got it. Can I ask a follow up question about the cost sharing element? Thank you. Under C M S, when you have, you know, with the what we're talking about in Bill nine seven eight. We have a increase from one seventy five to two hundred. You have put here in your note, in the notes here, that we could assume a one point eight million dollar savings for premium sharing. Under C M S, can you mandate a a cost sharing? I was under the impression that you can't make people. Either do co pays or premium sharing and and just have an understanding because I'm a little bit confused.
It's a great question. For for regular Medicaid, the amount of cost sharing is very, very, very highly restricted. By by C M S. This is under eleven fifteen waiver, which kind of. If if the Secretary of H H S agrees, suspends a lot of the. The the whole idea of eleven fifteen waiver is it's a research demonstration, kind of something new. So we could ask for. A a a waiving of the of the normal Medicaid rules, including those around around cost sharing. What I wanted to communicate earlier is when I when I said, you know, if we were to extend it and require cost sharing, there is a little bit of policy uncertainty. Because I don't know exactly what C M S would do in response to that application. I suspect they would be okay with it, given that this is, this would be more generous than what exists today. And there already is cost sharing for this population between one seventy five and two hundred percent. So I feel. Our our legal team feels quite confident that they would say yes, but there is a little bit of uncertainty there that I just wanted to express.
Yeah, that makes sense. And how did we come up with a ten dollar cost sharing amount? And I'd love to know where people are currently.
Great question. Let me answer the first part of that. The ten dollars was not meant to be a policy recommendation at all. We just picked literally a round number. Ran the math and and then and then just gave you that. So, you know, if you if one wanted to make it five dollars or fifteen dollars, one could inflate it up or down from there. In terms of the amount of. Premium sharing today for this population between one seventy five and two hundred. I don't know the answer to that, but my it's possible my colleagues might, or we can get back to you in writing.
Yeah, I'm curious, and I would also be curious if under this, we could also have a co pay or a deductible. For folks and I'd love to hear what maybe other states do for this sort of population. I don't know if you have any of that sort of information at hand. Where you need to connect this.
Sorry, Senator, sorry, off mute, it's all, I defer to the chairs.
Yeah, gee, I think this is, you know, you certainly check and get back to Representative Dayton. But my my understanding is that Massachusetts, for example, has a has had a broad waiver in effect since the beginning of the A C A to do their what their health. With the Mass Health Connect program that supports people well beyond two hundred percent. So it provides cost sharing support. So that would have. Co pays and deductibles for people like well, well into the middle class. Does that sound right?
It does. It does. And my my answer to the representative's question was. That Massachusetts is the state that has is the most parallel program. And in our written replies, we can give you a little bit more detail on what they do. I just want to. I want to make sure I get the the numbers right. I want to make sure I don't give you a false a false number here, so.
Got it. Thank you. And sorry for the detailed questions, but I'm just kind of curious, you know, the implications. I I think it's a good policy, but want to make sure that we do it in a a way that's fiscally responsible. So thank you for your answer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Austin.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm actually not interested in, not that I'm not interested in it. I'm not. My question is not relative to this. Are you almost at the bottom of this sheet? Because I have another meeting at eleven and I have a question that I'd like to ask.
Senator, I think we have just one more very quick question.
Okay, then I'll wait until that's over and I would like to ask a question before I leave the meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senator. So the last question that was posed had to do with providing further context. Tony's last name is Barrett, so I will make sure that you get that that is misspelled in this particular document. So we'll make sure that you get the right spelling of her last name. We have also, I will just say, I personally have had conversations with Lisa Tepper Bates about the twenty four hour services. And they really are specific, the the challenge is specific to housing and not having enough staffing to. To staff the phones or to answer questions around housing. With respect to the contracts that we have with United Way, we haven't reduced any of our hours. And nor have she's in my conversations with her, has there been an explanation as to whether or not, or an indication? That the hours that we have contracted with them to provide services have been reduced in any way. But I can continue to have those conversations with her and have some clarity. The challenge with United Way is that they are unlike other contracts contractors with the state in that they have a specific contract. With every state agency with whom they have a contract, rather than having a master contract like most vendors do. With with terms and conditions that are applicable to all of the agencies and then a specific statement of work for each one of the of the contracts. So it's it's hard to get sort of a lay of the land of all of of the work that's being done because each of those agencies contract. Specifically with United Way. But in speaking with her, the issue was really was it was related to the crisis, the housing crisis line and not any other services that we contract for with them.
Right. So in, would we be able, we we've gone back and forth with them and with you and I'm sure we will with Department of Housing. Is there, do you have any suggestions about how we could solve that issue of making sure that there's a lead agency on this? Is that something we could do going forward? I know those contracts are currently in place.
Right, Senator, I, well, I always believe there's a solution to just about everything. So, yeah, I I believe that there is. And so if you would permit me, I'd actually like to have a conversation with Commissioner Gilman at D A S to see what options might exist. For this, for improving or changing the process, because it does get very confusing. And it does make it hard for each agency to be accountable to its its committees of cognizance. When you have one vendor that serves a number of different agencies. So we we can either get you a clear explanation as to what each of them does. With what each agency does for United Way, that might be helpful too, and then see what our options might be. So I will, I will take that on. I will talk with Commissioner Gilman and I'll come back with some clear explanations for how the process works and what recommendations we might have. To simplify it and make it more, make it clearer in the future.
Wonderful, thank you. And I'd be happy to turn it over to Senator Austin.
Thank you, Senator. I just have one question, and that is relative to. I, we have a foundation that we support and have supported for years, a Jewish foundation. And they get paid out of the Department of Social Services. And they have not gotten their funding yet this year. If you could just check and see where that is.
Yes.
Make sure that that funding is getting, they not only had general fund dollars, they also had ARPA dollars. And I believe those were through your your department also.
Yes.
So if we could just make sure, and I'm sure that it happened as a result of the changes and. That things were going on in the administration. So you wouldn't mind checking into that and let let us know where that stands?
No, may I have the name again, Senator?
The Jewish Federation, Jewish.
Thank you. Okay, yes, we will. And we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think you're the chairman now, Matt.
Sure, I think Representative Gilchrist is still on, so she can, I don't want to wrest control from her.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. I I do have a question that's not reflected on here. The five percent reduction in compensation to nursing homes. That they have been told about, I don't think it's in the governor's budget, but I believe they've been told that is necessary to pay for this transition to acuity based care. Can you? Speak to that and sort of, we've we've heard a lot of consternation from. The industry, as I think you can imagine, and just wanted to know if you could, you know, think about how we should, we should. Approve or not. Commissioner, speaking to us, you're muted.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize. Senator Lester, I'm going to apologize because I'm still making a note about Senator Austin's matter, so I missed the first part of your question. I apologize. Would you mind?
Yeah, no, absolutely. So we we have been notified by the by the nursing homes that they have been notified by you to expect. A five percent reduction. In their rates as as a switch, I guess, sort of. As the switch to acuity based care happens. You know, obviously, we could fund acuity based care in a couple of different ways, and I just wanted to see if you had. Comments about that and why we should or should not allow the department to pursue the reduction.
Yeah, okay. So thank you. And I'll also ask Gee to join me in this answer. They, I know that they couch it as a reduction. We 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 do not. We actually are encouraging nursing homes to move to a more acuity based care model for care. And we're also encouraging them, as you know, in in other parts of our legislation that we proposed in this year. To fill the beds that they have. So I know that they're feeling that in both instances as a reduction in their in their rate. The fact of the matter is, is that the rate is actually very robust for acuity based care, and that is designed, that is actually intentional because we are. We are not, essentially what we're doing is we're not raising the rate for traditional care and we're offering an incentive for acuity based care. That's really what's happening. But I know that on their books, it probably feels like it's a reduction, but that's not necessarily what's going on. But I'm going to, I see Gee is interested in joining to conversation, so I'll stop and allow him to do that.
Great, great, Commissioner. And Senator. Let me just want to parse the question a a tiny bit. I know you mentioned acuity, but I I wonder if. The industry is actually referring to the quality, the quality payment.
Yeah, I think that's also what they're referring to.
Yeah, let me, let me just. I think probably they're referring to, and then if if they actually mean acuity, can circle back. So. Earlier this year. As as authorized by statute, Commissioner Barton Reeves sent a letter to the nursing home industry. Describing the details of the quality bonus payment program that we will. We will start in July of this year. This has been a multi year journey to pay nursing homes based on the quality of the care that they deliver to the residents. It's important both for resident health and dignity, but also because it can help save money because of nursing homes. Take steps to ensure the health of their patients, like reducing bed sores that can reduce spending on the medical side. That that quality program is authorized by the legislature. And we've been having a year of reporting only, so it's no money, but just just telling nursing homes how they're doing along the quality metrics. This program is budget neutral. It is not a five percent reduction. What the program is doing is it's saying we're going to take the total pool of money that we're giving to nursing homes today. It'll be exactly the same on July second as it was on June thirtieth. There will be winners and losers, right? In that pool, homes that have high quality will get paid more and homes that have low quality will get paid less. And that's exactly what we want. We want an incentive. We want a program that gives homes incentives to invest in in high quality care. We've gotten some technical concerns in the industry about like, okay, well, how? How are you administering that? You know, might there be cash flow issues? And we're very open to working with the industry. We certainly don't want to create any cash flow industries with them. But I just wanted to clarify, this would only be a five percent reduction for a home that is the absolute worst quality. And it'll be a five percent increase in their payment for a home that is high quality and on net, it's it's budget neutral. There's no, there's not, it's not reducing money to the whole industry.
No, I understand, but there's there's clearly downside risk.
There is. There is downside risk, for sure. Yep.
The the other sort of the flip side, where the additional comments we've heard is that. Doing that and also doing, I think the proposal is, I think it's an eleven eleven. To also create a financial incentive to reduce the number of beds at the same time is is sort of moving is is duplicative. We've heard some pushback on that and wanted to see why we should, you know, not wait to see how that incentive program works before we create that that additional incentive.
That's fair. That's fair. We can certainly go back and reconsider. But as Gee had mentioned, that the quality, the quality payment program has to be budget neutral. So this is the the best way that we could find to do that. New York is doing it in a similar way. Their pool is smaller, but they've also explained to us that they don't have as a as effective of a program. Because the incentive payments are smaller, so it and because the, for a number of reasons. It just, they're finding that it isn't, they're not getting the same sort of outcome that they had, that they think they would have had with a higher number, because they started out with a much.
You muted yourself, Commissioner.
I'm so sorry. You know, I'm just going to move my keyboard far away from, because I'm clearly not responsible with it. So I'm just going to move it far away and leave it here so I don't keep doing that. So New York had, in in our conversations with New York, they had found that they had started with a much higher number in terms of a quality program. Because their two, their program two had to be budget neutral. And then they ended up with a with less than one percent and it it just ended up not being an effective program. And their advice to us was to just not take such a precipitous drop. So we then went to the five percent. Which we understand in combination with incentives to fill unused beds feels like a lot. Feels like a lot, so we are, we are certainly willing to continue to have those conversations with the industry, and we and we have been and will continue to do that.
In the, I'm sorry, the budget neutrality, is that a requirement of federal law?
It is not a requirement of federal law, it 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 is um direction that we have been given by some of our. Uh partners at OTG and and OPM that we need to make it budget neutral.
On a slightly different topic, um we do have a couple of bills that uh seek to. Uh promote the use of community health workers by the department. Um my understanding is that the department is already has funding in its budget to do this, and could you, I don't know if you could speak to that and just bring us up to speed as to. As to where that stands.
Yeah, so we, it's part of a budget proposal that hopefully will pass in this session. So that we can have additional dollars to give to community action agencies so that they continue to to support in the communities, I think this is what you're referring to, Senator. So we do have, we have the community action, you're talking about, I'm sorry, you're talking about the community health workers. Or you're talking about community action agencies, I think I may have just.
Well, I think there's, I think there's funding for community health workers through community action agencies, I think that's part of.
Correct. That's correct, so that is already in the budget. And that is, you know, essentially to help impart with the unwinding, which we know is going to be a significant lift in effort in in the community. And it's also, you know, to see other ways in which community health workers can be leveraged to provide more community-based support. But it's primarily for the unwinding and, you know, we, community action agencies are our partners and LIEP and. LIWAP and all of the other programs that we have, so this is really from the governor's perspective, uh a recognition of how important the community action agencies are, and we. We also share in their criticality in what it is that we do, so that's, that's what's in the budget.
Great, are there questions from? There are no hands up, I am puzzled by that, oh. Representative Johnson, is this, is this a tentative question, Representative Johnson?
No, actually it isn't, but thank you for thinking of tentative, I appreciate it. Uh the the question is uh about the, whether or not there has been a change in how we. Look at the so-called level of care force, uh nursing facility care versus the uh. Rest home care, and there seems to be a change, and I'm just wondering, did that come from the federal government? Um in terms of how we make these determinations, because it seems as though. There are, and I've mentioned this before, and I don't know if we know the answer to it, uh but. I've mentioned this before, I think that there might be a change in how we make these decisions in terms of how we make reimbursement to the nursing facilities. Uh because there are people who uh would never be allowed into a rest home because their level of care would be too much. But they're accordingly not also accepted into a nursing facility. Because uh there, the claim is is that their level of care is too little, and they're sometimes put into shelters because they're people who have. Been very low income, uh suffered, say, surgery, been in uh, you know, been in the hospital, but not accepted into nursing facilities. And I'm worried that because we've put so much emphasis on money follows the person into the home, that if you don't have a home. That you don't have anywhere to uh get the follow-up care, and I'm wondering what what precipitated that, and how come we're in that circumstance at this point in time?
Yeah, so I'm uh Senator, Representative, this is well out of my experience, yes, I'm going to love uh ask you if you would. Response to the question.
Great, Representative, thank you for the question, and if if I might, I just wanted to say one quick thing just for Senator's last last question before just, before I answer. Senator, you asked their question back to nursing homes, um on why, why might it make sense to have? A quality payment and also um the excess bed thing in the same year, and I just want to point out, they're. They're they're getting a different, um they're getting a different policy objectives, the the quality um program. Was the member of the legislature, my understanding when the legislature uh voted to approve this, I I think the 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 idea was to try to create a business case for homes. To deliver the high-quality care that's good for residents and also lowers costs on the medical side. Um the excess bed requirements is kind of the the idea, well. Let's not have the state, the the taxpayers paying for unused space if there's nursing home that has. A lot of unused space year after year, um implicitly Medicaid's paying for it, so I just wanted to point out, they're they're getting at, they're getting at different things and um different. Some high-quality homes have low occupancy, some high-quality homes have high occupancy, it's kind of a, a. The the there's um, there's a range there, so I just wanted to to make sure to answer that one. Um Representative, on on your question, and I I feel bad, Representative, because you have asked this before, and I know we we connected. Uh offline, but it feels like it's a little bit of a dangling. Uh this uh and and it sounds like we didn't wrestle it right to to the bottom, so I apologize for that. Um I'm wondering if I can connect with you uh today offline. I'm not quite, and and we will bring a subject matter expert from my team, I'm not quite understanding. The change that you're referring to, but if I guess if I take a step back. The the broader concern that you raise, I think, is a real one, which is. For people who are at nursing home level of care and want to live in the community, we want that too, it's. Lower cost, um for many people, it gives them a greater sense of freedom. But for people who don't have a home, and they may have sold it because they got admitted to a hospital and then went to a nursing home, it can be a real problem. Um and I I think this is a gap in our, in our safety net, um. Uh that kind of the intersection of housing and home and community-based services. Um but the particular policy change that you're you're teeing on, I I need to connect with you offline, so I'm wondering if if I could follow up with you one-on-one on that.
I think that would be an excellent idea, maybe we can figure this out by looking at what the federal changes have been and. And see where we are now, this is a, this is something that's coming up in my community, and I I've talked to our uh shelter uh. Operator here, and this is something that she can't handle these people, and they're spending their time in the emergency room. There's no real place for them to go, and I I, as I mentioned to you before, I've had people who. Uh have had open chest surgery, and unfortunately, it was the summertime, they were released into the riverbank of my town. Uh so this is not uh, not a good idea, uh I'm just saying. And I think that we need to start looking at that, we've had people, the other question I have that kind of fits in with this, so maybe when we talk. Uh is the fact that there seems to be a problem with nursing facility certification. If there's a certain percentage higher of people that have behavioral health disorders. And I'm wondering if that fits into some of these difficulties that we're having with the the, you know. Uh what, you know, getting people placed, and there's some that if they have too many people with behavioral health disabilities, and it puts them into another category. And that might be part of it, because some of the people who are 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 have these difficulties do have behavioral health issues, and so um. Uh not the guy with the heart tran- tran- uh problem, but you know, this, the other people who can't be managed in the in the shelter. Would never be accepted into a rest home, um. These people are um out there and they're they're in need of some type of care, and they can't manage on their own, and so this is a. This is a real problem, uh and then going to the uh keeping the numbers of beds available for discharge. Uh this also is a problem, if if we don't have the state pay the nursing facilities a little bit of money. To uh keep some beds open, then when you get into the situation where you have a hospital discharge plan. That it's required by the the hospital in terms of their Medicare and Medicaid certifications, that they have an adequate discharge plan. If we do not fund adequately, uh some open beds for discharge planning in each region. Then we run into a problem with certification issues, so I think that we really have to take a look at having those open beds. Uh and make sure that you do have some open beds, and part of the problem is what happens, if you don't have the open beds, you don't pay that amount of money. To keep the beds open, what happens? The people stay in the, stay in the hospital, or they get discharged to something that would not be adequate. And that is going to require that they go back to the hospital, and then there's a problem where the hospital gets dinged, so they may not put the, they may not re-admit them. They'll put them on observation status, and then they'll wait, and they'll be in observation status. So we have to try and make sure we don't create this circular flow of difficulties all the way through these systems. Uh so I hope that we do take a good careful look at how many beds we are keeping open, because that is a real, real problem by not having enough. Beds open for uh, you know, discharge planning to be able to make a dis- adequate discharge plan to a facility. I I I'm thrilled with money follows the person, that's great, but if you don't have the home care services. And you're not going to be able to do the adequate prob- uh addressing of the of these situations as well. So it's a real problem, we don't have the uh the staff anymore in the home care level because of the changes that. Took place in nineteen ninety-seven for the reimbursing the home care services, and so here we are again. With a problem of not providing adequate care, uh and making sure that the, how are we doing this? How are we paying our our home care services? Uh for people uh that are discharged to money follows the person, do we have the adequate staff, are they getting the? The right follow-up, and and that is a huge problem, and that's something that we have to take a look at as well, so. I appreciate your work very much, but those are some of my concerns, and some of the ways that we have to take a look at how all the system looks. We can't be cost shifting from one place to the next to the next, we need to kind of like take a look at what the costs are, make sure we provide the adequate care. And I really, really appreciate all your hard work, so thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank, thank you, um Brett, just, can I just address the last piece of of what you raised about the homes, I'm sorry about the nursing homes. Uh so the incentive or the the proposal in our bill isn't an all-or-nothing proposition. Because we're very sensitive to the fact that beds do need to be available for the reasons that you just articulated. So nursing homes have actually to a year, and they do have a waitlist process, and they can demonstrate to us that. They would be able to fill those beds but for other circumstances, mostly it's because of staffing. So we're not necessarily just shutting down beds and making them unavailable to exacerbate many of the circumstances that you just described. We really are trying to be thoughtful and also trying to balance it as you, as you uh clearly articulated. You with the fiscal constraints that we have and some of the the concerns um about having beds that are vacant. And some nursing facilities leaving the bed vacant because there's no financial incentive for them to actually fill the beds. Because they receive the same amount of money, whether their beds are empty, whether their beds are full. So this is really um our in our intent, and in a state a different way, our intention here really is to strike that balance. But we're happy to continue to have that dialogue about better ways in which we can do that. That don't feel burdensome to the industry, and I'm seeing Nicole, who I asked to talk, it's a thing. Because Nicole is our nursing home expert, and I realized that she was not on for some reason, so I know that Senator Dayton has, Representative Dayton has been waiting very patiently, but we can certainly. Um uh Senator Lesser, according to your direction, return to Nicole and get some more detail around um our plans with respect to. Nursing home reimbursements, uh our community homes, all of the things that we're doing, because we we do have our subject matter uh expert on.
Well, just as, I'm sorry, thank you so much for that information, and I just uh wondered what type of incentive is needed. I I you mentioned an incentive, what is, where is there an incentive uh except for to accept the patient? Is it about level of care, what the mix is, patient mix, is what what is the uh, what is the incentive?
I was referring specifically to the uh acuity care incentive, that's really what I was referring uh back to in particular.
So it is patient mix?
It is, it is patient mix, you know, we're, we're very much aware that nursing homes need to remain fiscally viable in order to provide. Care, we we do know that, we also know that there is, and we, there was just an article in. In uh yesterday's newspaper about the quality of that care, and for us, that's paramount, if people are in homes, they need to be cared for adequately. Uh and there are lots of pressures on the industry to make that happen, but the care cannot be compromised, and so we're. Doing our best to be able to provide them with appropriate or adequate amounts of funding, but also to incentivize them to provide. Excellent care, and that's, that's a very delicate and balanced, uh sometimes a very difficult thing to do.
I so appreciate all your work, and thank you so much for your explanations, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Representative, I'll follow up right now, I was getting an email thread, because I think on the, on the first issue that you raised, I do think that's outstanding, I want to make sure we wrestle it down. And it's really briefly on the second, you mentioned, um. Yeah, you mentioned a facility, if there's too great a um a percentage of its members having mental, mental disease. Um you're absolutely right, under federal law, there is something called the institutes, institutions for mental disease or an IMD exclusion. That says that if a facility that has more than sixteen beds, um has more than fifty percent. Of um of its patients having uh, having a mental disease. Uh Medicaid can't pay for it, um I think this is terrible policy, I'm happy to talk to you about the history behind it. But that that is, that is a real concern, and with all of our facilities, the the briefly, the the idea was. States before Medicaid were paying for a lot of psychiatric hospitals, and the federal government didn't want cost shifting onto them, um but it does create some, some incentives. Um and we have a team that works really closely with facilities as they get. You know, forty percent, forty-one, forty-two, to help them first understand that they're getting close, and then do individualized discharge planning. Or or to transfer people um to facilities that are right for them, anyway, happy to touch base offline, I just wanted to say you got that one right, that that is under federal law.
I I thought so, I just wanted to see if there's a way, how how we make a decision in terms of uh the diagnosis, uh it are we? Is there some type of equity in terms, so they have severe heart disease, they're, they they have no mobility. Uh but they do have behavioral health issues, I mean, how are we making those determinations? So we'll leave that for our chat, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative, Representative Dayton.
Uh thank you so much, um Mr. Chair, and just wanted to circle back on. One of your responses that we've talked about in a previous meeting uh regarding the peer support. Uh is question eight, um in your previous response from earlier this month. Um we talked about that um the recovery coaches are covered under a. Uh SUD waiver um for certain types of settings within the um. Residential and ambulatory setting, and I'm just trying to understand, we had a public hearing in. Human Services last week that talked about the um. Uh these sort of services, and uh CCAR came back to us with saying. That they weren't um kind of enthusiastic about potentially covering these under sort of a. Uh fee-for-service um type mechanism, and just wanted to understand. From you, um how we can do this in a way that is um. Works with organizations, because CCAR does some amazing work in our state, and they're absolutely um phenomenal. Um and would really like to understand how we can um get these sort of services um covered. Because sometimes outside of the uh residential settings, um it is so important that we. Um do this properly.
So thank you, Representative, I was not aware. Of uh any particular objection or concern about this payment model, so this is the first I'm hearing, and I'm unhappy. And I actually would appreciate it if I could have a little bit more of your time offline to understand what those concerns are, so that I can answer the question. And meet with my team and answer it more specifically. We were really hoping that just the ability to have here support recovery services um covered, whether it was fee-for-service or some other model. Would be advantageous to the communities that our partners serve, but if there's a challenge with the payment model, we want to learn more about that. Because I'm not familiar with it, and I can ask anyone else in my team if they've heard any concerns about this model, because I have not.
We, we can talk offline, um I would say, I would directly, if you could look at the human services testimony from last Thursday, the sixteenth. Uh March, um CCAR, they did a couple different um uh. Testimonies there, and I think one of the concerns that they were having was they do get a grant um from. Uh governments of about three point eight, I'm trying to understand if that's all from Connecticut. Or if that's a mixture of other federal grants, um because. My feeling is if we can um get a a match on that, uh and on those sort of um. Services from CMS, um I think it would be really um advantageous for us to. Um maximize the the federal dollars, so um would really love to explore that more, Commissioner, and. Sorry if I caught you off guard with that, but it's something we we did talk about in um earlier in uh. This environment, but then we had this follow-on hearing, so thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you, Representative, and that might be a conversation you might want to loop in our our friends over at Demus on, because I know they've got a lot.
Exactly, because that grant that they get from them is coming from Demus, so um. But just want to explore that more, because so many folks um are suffering particularly. Um outside of the setting, and we want to make sure that we don't have um to readmit folks just for them to get services, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Representative, uh uh. Commissioner, I don't see additional hands up, I know we asked you for two hours of time, we want to allow you to run your agency to the extent that you can.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, Senator, but Representative Lucio had a series of questions that she had posed in the last session that we did not get a chance to.
Oh.
I would hate to have a second section, it's still not have responded to her question. She's still on, um I'm not sure she is, I don't. She's still on, I'm not sure she is, I don't see her.
She, she is logged on, I don't know, I don't, she, her camera's on.
Yeah, I just don't see her camera on, I just see that she's logged on.
Representative, are you there? Representative Nuccio?
Well, we have provided the answers, and if. She'd like to have a separate session with us, we're happy to do that, if you. Would rather handle it that way, obviously defer to you.
Well, it's hard to answer her questions to her if she's not, she's not here, so. I want to be, you know, I, obviously happy to get her those answers now. Okay, well, thank you for your responsiveness to so many of our questions. And would love to. I mean, I'm sure Representative Gilchrist and I will be in touch with an agency about subcommittee's work. Very shortly, we will be having your decision-making meeting on Friday, I believe. And seeing no additional questions from the subcommittee, I think we're going to let you go.
Thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your.